The meeting for Thursday, June 5th to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Bodgy, here.
Councilman Walker, here.
Mayor Wheaton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Eldridge, here.
Councilman Gilbert.
Here.
My presence.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation given tonight by Pastor DK Hall of Central City Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, if you will bow your heads with me. Father, we come to in the name of Jesus. We pause for a moment and I thank you for these individuals and these leaders, our community leaders here. We thank you for them. We lift up them and their families to you and ask you for protection and health and strength. And Father, we pray for clarity and wisdom tonight as they make the decisions for our community, Father, and we thank you that you bless them. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
By the sign of the United States of America, consider all your riches and excellence one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Hall. Item three, consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any changes?
No changes, Father.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Walker. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Vote on that.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. For A, consider appointment to the Industrial Development Board. Mr. Mills.
May council members, the current terms of Jim Shipley, J.D. Parks, and Alan Ray for service as members on the IDB, the Cookville Industrial Development Board have expired. Members of the IDB serve six-year terms and are appointed by the city council. Mr. Shipley and Mr. Parks have been contacted and indicated they would like to continue to serve if reappointed. I would recommend for the reappointment of Mr. Shipley and Mr. Parks with terms to expire in May of 2031. Mr. Ray Allen has indicated he no longer wishes to serve. And I believe the council needs a little more time to find the right candidate to replace Mr. Ray on this very important board. I would remind you that whoever you appoint would have to be a resident of the city of Cookville. But again, I would recommend to go ahead and proceed with the reappointment of Mr. Shipley and Mr. Parks for service on the IDB for another six-year term.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Walker, second by Councilman Bodgy. Any discussion from the council? Go ahead and vote on that.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Five A, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on May 15, 2025. Is there a motion?
The move.
Motion made by Councilman Bodgy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, excuse me, Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Go ahead and vote on that.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Five B, hold a public hearing and consider on second and final reading ordinance O-25-0505. Amending the fiscal year 2025 budget for the city of Cookville. It's nice wonder.
Mayor, council, this ordinance amends the general fund budget for FY25 with a decrease to fund balance of $3.5 million. There are no changes since the first reading. I am happy to answer any questions, but recommend your approval on the second and final reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion from the council?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilbert. This is a public hearing, so we will open the floor for anyone who'd like to speak on this agenda item for the budget. Yes, sir. Name, city or county, and three-minute limit.
Formalities, of course. Trenton Stroh, city of Cookville. I did have some time to read in three minutes. I do remember. I did have some time to read through a few of these things today. So I will be asking a few questions on here, and I understand that I might not get answers to those questions today. However, I do want to go ahead and formally request that I would be able to follow up with you all afterwards on the meeting, so for a formal response to these questions, because I know in this situation that you're not offered that opportunity at times. So for this particular item, what specific departments or programs are receiving additional funding or budget cuts in this amendment? Reason being is because residents rely on these services and reductions without transparency erode the public trust. So we just wanted to know if there are any public services like libraries or youth programs or transits that are being defunded to plug budget holes elsewhere? Are there any portions of this amended budget being allocated to address Cookville's affordable housing shortage? Housing insecurity is growing and city budgets should reflect current urgent community needs. And with housing costs outpacing the local incomes, will any or new directed funds support land banking or down payment assistance or affordable housing development? And were any community members or especially renters or housing advocates consulted in the preparing of this amendment? This also might have to do with another amendment that's on here as well regarding the property tax, but I can bring that up at a later point in time. So I'm just bringing up those points for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
You appreciate it. Anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion. Any comments from the council? Okay, go ahead and take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Excuse me, for the consent agenda. Six A, consider declaring a surplus of vehicles and equipment. And six B, set a date, seven three twenty-five for a public hearing on ordinance O-25-0610. Amendments to the zoning code for drive-through restaurants as a use permitted upon appeal within the CN Neighborhood Commercial District. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
The move.
Motion made by Councilman Bodgy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the council? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote on the consent agenda.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Seven A, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance O-25-0606, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026 for Cookville Regional Medical Center. Okay, that is summer day. Yes.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor Wheaton and council tonight. I would like to bring forth for consideration and adoption the budget information for Cookville Regional Medical Center and its subsidiaries. So the facility is budgeting $4 million in net income for FY26 compared to the projected net income of $1 million for FY25. The budgeted operating margin is 3.9% compared to the projected operating margin of 4.1%. This is comparative to national averages. The facility is also budgeting a 77% increase in total revenues for FY26, driven primarily by increases in volumes, new physicians, improvements in the length of stay, and improvements in cash collections. Total revenues include $31 million in uncompensated care, reflecting the facility's ongoing commitment to building healthier communities even at the absence of receiving reimbursement. The facility is budgeting $487 million in operational expenses for FY26 compared to the projected expense of $459 million for FY25. Salaries, wages, and supplies are the largest expenses for the facility. And during the current fiscal year, the facility invested over $6 million in our greatest assets, which is our employees. And the facility continues to invest in its employees next fiscal year, anticipating approximately $1 million in market increases and a 3% merit increase for their employees. Supplies are budgeted at 7% increase over projected supplies for FY25. Primary contributors to that increase include increase in pharmaceuticals, chargeable and nonchargeable supplies, and non-capitalizable equipment, which is costing less than $5,000. The facility's capital budget consists of $48 million in departmental capital and $37 million in expansion and renovation projects. Key anticipated departmental purchases include the following. Epic, which is a new medical record system, and Varian Trubin Linear Accelerator for Radiation Oncology. Key expansion projects consist of the following. Four West Renovation, which will provide 20 additional beds for the facility, and Endoscopy Expansion, which will provide an additional four endoscopy suites, a Rehabilitation Expansion, which will be a joint venture with Encompass, which consists of new construction and renovation along with providing 40 additional beds for inpatient rehabilitation. The facility also estimates a cash reserve balance of $55.5 million for 63025 and $67 million for 63026. The facility has outstanding bond principal as of June 30 of 2025 totaling $43.4 million. FY26 principal payments on the bonds will be about $3.8 million and interest on the bonds around $1 million. The facility has two capital leases, which have an outstanding debt of $1.5 million as of June 2025, and anticipated principal payments that will be made in 2026 will be about $797,000. That concludes our request.
Thank you. Is there a motion on CRMC's budget?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Walker. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. This is a public hearing, so I will open the floor for anyone who'd like to speak on this agenda item regarding the regional medical center budget. Go ahead.
Once again, my name's Trenton Stroh. I'm not sure if you need me to say that every single time, but just let me know. For specifically this budget item, or excuse me, this item on the agenda, how does this budget support improvements in the ER wait times, the staff shortages, and access to outpatient mental health care? And what investments are being made in recruitment, facility upgrades, and/or expanded behavioral health services? We all know that Cookville Regional Medical Center's emergency rooms are very overwhelmed, and there is a lack of mental health care that does affect everyone here in this county. Also, how is the hospital preparing for the impact of proposed Medicaid cuts and the loss of the 340B program revenue? With the rising uninsured rates that are sure to potentially happen and reduced reimbursement and the initiative that I just heard you speak on, how has CRMC identified how it will sustain its services? Of course, thousands rely on CRMC for low-cost medications and Medicaid-supported care as well. Has there been any conversation about developing a secondary campus or satellite location? Given the growth limits of the current campus, is CRMC planning ahead to meet the regional demand from hospital closures and urban sprawl? Cookville is becoming a regional health hub, and our infrastructure must scale accordingly. Thank you.
Yeah, our CEO, Buffy Keyes, here, and she's happy to answer, be able to answer a few of those questions, it sounds like.
I just want to thank you for that very thought-out, very well-thought-out question. There's a lot of items in there, and I could talk about just one for about three hours about Medicaid. I will tell you that we do have a growth plan, an expansion plan. We are not looking at an expansion off of campus right now. We do have a five-to-seven-year plan right now of including the new MR that Tommy Renee mentioned or Ms. Wells mentioned, but also endoscopy, a brand-new ER to hold the capacity. Unfortunately, I don't think there's an ER in the country that's big enough, to be honest with you. Wait times are outstanding right now across the country. We have been working on that for quite some time. And so we also have an urgent care that we've opened seven days a week till 11:00 p.m. to help relieve some of that ER wait time. As far as any other expansion, we've got a new ER, and we are looking at a new South Tower expansion as well. And that'll be, well, on the south side, I guess I should say. The best way, look at me, I'm pointing over here. But and as far as Medicaid cuts, we are very concerned. I actually sit on the American Hospital Association Regional Policy Board. And right now, it is in the Senate for the reduction of around $800 billion of Medicaid over the next 10 years. We're very concerned about that, not so much for CRMC, but for the patients in our community, because a lot of people will lose their insurance. It will not affect them coming to our hospital. We will see everyone regardless of ability to pay. That never stops, ever. We do that today, and that will continue to. We are fighting against those Medicaid cuts, as you can imagine, because I worry about even the more rural health places, that it will shut their doors. It's very possible, or reduction of services. 340B, we're still going strong with 340B. And by the way, that's a bill that Congress passed, I think, several years ago. We have millions of dollars in cost avoidance. What that means is our patients pay less for their prescriptions than other people do because of ability to have that program. And I can't remember what else you said, and I'm so sorry.
If you want to, yeah, afterwards, yeah, y'all can have some more discussion, yeah, and talk about.
I just wanted to add one question while you had the time up here about that EHR program. I am a healthcare IT professional, so that is something that actually speaks to me as well. Did the hospital consider the cost of the Epic programming before they signed on with Vanderbilt University Medical Center? Epic is quite the most expensive EHR program that is out there. I love it, just, you know, throwing that out there. But I do understand the cost of the program, and how is that going to affect the operations of the hospital by investing in that programming?
Sure, absolutely. Not only do we look at the cost of that, but we actually did a deep dive on that with all of our current systems. I believe that we will actually be eliminating, I forget how many multiple current IT programs that will be integrated into Epic. Integration is the key word here for me, because right now, our medical record system, if I go to this hospital and let's say I'm transferred to Erlanger or Vanderbilt University Medical Center or UT Knoxville, whatever the case may be, with Epic, they can pull up the medical record that I had here. Today, you cannot do that. Integration, it's safer care for everybody. And by the way, Epic's the number-one widest healthcare electronic medical record in the country. It's unfortunate, but you get what you pay for. As a health IT expert, you understand that completely. And by the way, we're probably going to be hiring, so.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you answering those questions. Anyone else who'd like to speak on CRMC budget? Okay, seeing none, any comments from the council?
Uh, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll echo, being on the hospital board and being a nurse practitioner myself, I'll echo that every board meeting we have, we have those discussions about every one of those topics. As you know, no easy answer for any of them. It's a constant, trying to find a solution. Things change, find the next solution. But it's something we're aware of, always working on every board meeting. So thank you for bringing them up, and we're working on it for sure.
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you for all y'all's hard work on putting this together and keeping the council informed throughout that entire process. I know that we've all had meetings on Epic, we've had meetings on expansions, and meetings just throughout the process, and that's been super helpful for us to pass this budget. I'm 100% behind you guys, and I'm excited for what we've got on the horizon for CRMC.
Any comments from the council?
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, we were a little, well, I was a little concerned about the millions we were going to spend on it, but they reassured us it's going to be really good. And I think even, I'll even speak into it for, and so I'm excited where we're going. I have confidence in what you're doing. And Buffy is one that's very open, very honest with us. So I really appreciate that. And like Eric said, just to echo him, it's good to be able to work with you guys and just ask you a question, you tell us where we're at. That's got a lot of, that's helped me to have a lot of trust in what you guys do, so appreciate it. And just, we've had a lot of talks about a lot of those concerns as well, so.
Those are great questions, very good. Yes.
Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion. We've got a motion and a second. We've had our comments, so we can go ahead and vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Five B, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance O-25-0607, providing a tax levy for the city of Cookville, Tennessee for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2026, providing means for the collection of revenues and establishing the due dates and delinquency dates for property taxes. Ms. Emel.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. This is the first of three ordinances tonight to officially adopt our budget for fiscal year '26. This particular ordinance establishes the tax rate for the 2025 property taxes, providing revenue for our fiscal year '26 budget. We are proposing a seven-cent increase in property tax from the current 92 cents to 99 cents. The increase will provide an additional $862,000 in tax revenue. Five cents of the increase is being allocated to the general fund, 1.5 cents to the debt service fund, and a half a penny to the solid waste fund. The proposed tax rate of 99 cents, it is projected to provide revenue of approximately $12.2 million. The allocation in the ordinance is 67 cents there to the general fund, 12 and a half cents to the transportation infrastructure fund, 3.5 cents to the geo-debt service fund, 6 cents to the solid waste fund, 5 cents to state street aid, 4 cents to economic development, and a penny to the quality-of-life fund. This slide shows you the impact of that 7-cent property tax increase for homeowners. For a home that's appraised at $500,000, for example, at the current 92 cents, property taxes would be $1,150. Under the new 99 cent rate, that same property would be, the tax would be $1,237.50. That's an increase of $87.50. And then we also have on the slide there what the current county rate is and what the tax is for the county for that property. And then this slide shows you the property tax rates for 2024 for municipal cities in the state with populations over $20,000 or 20,000 people. And then the city tax rate there is highlighted in orange, and you can see highlighted in green where Cookville lands. Our tax rate of 92 cents put us below the middle of that grouping. And if it had been 99 cents last year, it only moves up two spots, so we'd still be below the mid-range of that grouping. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. And again, this ordinance sets the tax rate at 99 cents for the 2025 taxes, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Walker. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Gilbert. This is a public hearing, so we will open up the floor for anyone who'd like to speak on this agenda item. Okay, Trent, you want to come up? Oh, yes. You want to go first? I know you can't stand, so if you, or, yeah.
Stand, thank you.
Okay.
Can't hear me, oh, yeah.
That's fine. Tell us your name and three-minute time limit.
Well, I've been talking to members of our community about this tax. And in order to be accountable to the public, this is a comment I'm receiving, not me, the community, Ralph's store shop or restaurants. They believe the Californians should be taxed for this property tax, number one, because they're a proxy problem to the event. In addition to that, we've got millionaires in this town that could be taxed heavier to make up that part of that difference and reduce our tax. The other thing that I've been hearing is that when we gave, I think, a million dollars Tennessee tax, there's a lot of people talking about that donation, which you guys decided to do. And under democracy, we're in the future of demand that you put it before our community as a vote. Period. Seems very ethical under democracy, so that the good old boys won't get a chance. We're making the money off of that event, and we, the people, have to pay the expense. That's all I got on this one.
Thank you.
I appreciate the presentation about how that affects the property owners in Putnam County and showing that slide, so that way they know the difference, that that was actually one of my questions. So I actually appreciate that visual for that. What is the city, one of my first questions is, what is the city doing to prevent developers and landlords from passing these tax increases onto the renters? Will there be incentives or caps to prevent displacement and rent gauging? And are there guard, or without guardrails, of course, property tax hikes can worsen the housing crisis that we are having here in Putnam County, also in the city as well? And is Cookville considering an affordable housing initiative that requires developers to reserve a percentage of units for rent-controlled or income-based occupancy? Programs like inclusionary zoning or density bonuses could protect renters while encouraging development as well, so that way growth and affordability can coexist, but only with an intentional policy that's made. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion. Any comments from the council?
I do think it's important just to note that while we do increases in, you know, paying our city employees is always something that we have put at the top of our list. And that's something that we want to continue to do, is to make sure our city employees are paid well, that we're able to recruit, retain our fire and police, you know, those are our employees as well, to make sure that we are able to take care of them.
Yeah, just a little color to that. Fire, police, life safety, obviously, those are the ones that grab the headlines. But we all need our garbage picked up. We need gas, electricity, too, and we value those employees. There's economic pressures to keep and retain and recruit, and we're responding to those.
Yeah, I think when you look at what Cookville's getting done right now, it's absolutely amazing. We're building fire stations. We are buying property downtown. We are expanding. We've renovated CPAC. You can look around at the infrastructure in this town, roads being paved and built. And you can see that Cookville's not only trying to keep up with its growth, it's working very hard to stick with that. And that's a thing that I think when you look at that tax rate and the tax rates of these other cities like Teleoma and Johnson City and Cleveland and Jackson and Oak Ridge, which are all at the top of that board, you know, you look at the price we pay, the amenities that we have here in the city of Cookville, and this is a great place to live and pay taxes. And I'm excited to see as much get done as we are getting accomplished.
All right, seeing none, we'll close the discussion and go ahead and take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Five, excuse me, not five. Seven C, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance O-25-0608, authorizing appropriations for financial aid to public service, nonprofits, and charitable organizations for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2026. Ms. Emel.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, this ordinance appropriates 1 million. Thank you, Mayor. Council members, this ordinance appropriates one million, one hundred and thirty five thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars to various public service, nonprofit, and charitable organizations for fiscal year twenty six. This amount is an increase of twenty two, twenty two percent over the fiscal year twenty five amount of nine hundred and twenty six thousand, four fifty. Of the amount appropriated, one million, one hundred and twenty thousand, nine forty is in the general fund and fifteen thousand comes from the utilities. Nine hundred and seventy four thousand, four ninety is for our governmental partners, joint ventures, and a hundred and sixty one thousand was allocated by the nonprofit committee. Now, I'm gonna go through the joint ventures. Government partners here, because we have made a change since we had our work session last month. But the first one and the largest amount that's in this ordinance is four hundred and twenty five thousand, four hundred and fifty one dollars to the Putnam County Library. That's an increase of eighteen thousand dollars over current year, eighty thousand to the Cookeville senior citizens, that's an increase of fifteen thousand over current year. One hundred and ninety thousand to the Upper Cumberland Regional Airport with a hundred and twenty thousand designated as a local grant match. Council had already approved a resolution committing to this match. If the airport gets the grant, then that money will be distributed to them. And it, their regular operations is an increase of thirty five thousand to seventy thousand. And then a hundred and five thousand to the Putnam County Chamber of Commerce with fifty thousand designated for the Highlands Economic Partnership and twenty five thousand for workforce development. And then this is the change since our work session last month. We're increasing the amount to the Putnam County, the Cookeville Putnam County Visitors Bureau to forty thousand. That's an increase of fifteen thousand dollars since we met last month. And that comes from the occupancy tax collections to promote tourism in the city of Cookeville and for the continued operations of the West Broad Street Welcome Center. Twenty five thousand, four hundred to the Putnam County Emergency Management Agency, fifty thousand to Cityscape with twenty eight thousand of it restricted to support Bob Fun Fest. Forty three thousand, one forty nine to the Tennessee Rehabilitation Center and fifteen thousand, nine forty to the Tennessee Central Rail Trail Authority. That's a total nine hundred and seventy four thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars for our governmental partners, joint ventures. And then for the nonprofits, we had a committee, they reviewed twenty two applications that were received for a request of two hundred and twenty nine thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. They were given a hundred and sixty one thousand dollars to allocate. They reviewed all the applications and the recommendations, their recommendations is what is in the ordinance. We have not changed any of these since last month, so I'm not gonna read them again unless you would like me to. But we've made no changes in them since we went through them in detail last month, so. That's the ordinance and that's what it appropriates, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Walker. Is there a second?
Say.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. This is another public hearing, so we will allow anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item to stand. Go ahead.
Thank you once again for providing those slides, those detailed slides about each individual contribution that was made. My questions are going to be, what are, what is the process to apply for this aid and how is it publicized to any emerging or smaller organizations? Are all nonprofits given a fair shot at applying or is access limited to the well-connected groups here in the county? Equity and those funding opportunities do help strengthen grassroots service networks that we do have here. And what accountability is required, such as receipts, reporting, or audits to ensure that those funds that are being contributed from the county or the city are properly being spent? And is this information easily accessible online or through any public records? I'm asking if the city does require any formal tracking of those public dollars used by any of those nonprofits. Without that oversight, those funds could be easily misused or unevenly distributed. And can residents look up how these funds were distributed and what outcomes were achieved, because that public data does promote trust, clarity, and continuous improvement.
So if I could address for the nonprofit group that the committee allocated, we do have an application process. That application is published in February and it's available on our website and anybody can apply. They just have to meet the TCA guidelines and meet that criteria to be eligible to receive funds. So we verify that they do meet those eligibility criteria, but the committee reviews them all and then we make a distribution to them quarterly. And they are required to provide us quarterly reports based on their application on their scope of work. So they submitted a scope of work of what they plan to do with the money. At the end of every quarter, they submit that scope of work telling us what they did with the money. So they submit that to the city, so that's the accountability process we have in place now. The governmental partners and joint ventures, they do provide us financial statements. Some of them do it on a monthly basis and then some do it quarterly, so we do have that information available.
Anybody else who'd like to speak? Okay, we'll close that public hearing portion. Any comments from the council?
Again, we'll also say thank you to the nonprofit committee for reviewing that. That's a lot of information. I had some of the directors tell me that it is a very lengthy application process, so I, I can attest that it is not just a piece of paper. They have to fill out a lot, provide what, three years of financial statements? I mean, it is, it is an in-depth review of what these nonprofits are. I love the fact that we're able to donate to nonprofits. I love the fact that we do joint ventures, because a lot of these people already do great work. There's no point in us reinventing the wheel. We can just contribute to them and they're already doing great things in this community. So I'm, this is a part of the budget I'm always very proud of, and thank you to those nonprofit committee for reviewing all that, because it's a, it's a lot of work and they don't get paid for it.
No.
It is just voluntary basis.
We get a free lunch.
I'm in, sign me up. Anybody else?
Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote on that. Is that my time limit?
I probably need one sometime. Yes, my husband would appreciate that. Send that home. I'll take that home, okay? Anything else? All right, we're voting here.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven D, hold a public hearing and consider on first, on first reading ordinance oh twenty five zero six zero nine. Adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty five and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty six for the city of Cookeville, Tennessee. Ms. Emel.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, this ordinance provides for the adoption of our fiscal year twenty six budget for all, all of our departments and our funds. Priorities that we tried to address in this budget include employee wages, you had alluded to that earlier. We have four hundred and eighty two full-time city employees. And we are proposing in this budget pay raises to try and remain competitive, particularly in public safety and some of our skilled positions. This budget also addresses capital and infrastructure improvements. We have over forty one million dollars just in the general government alone in this budget. And then, just like everybody else, we are seeing increased, increased costs of providing services to our citizens and economic uncertainty. So just to summarize, I know we went through in great detail what our plans are for our employee wages, but to summarize what this budget includes. This budget includes a market adjustment of two thousand dollars for all full-time employees. And a merit of up to two percent based on the employee's evaluation, both of those not to exceed the maximum, the range. And just those two items for our employees, for the general fund alone, costs nine hundred and ninety one thousand dollars. And when you factor in the benefits on top of that, you're looking at one point two million dollars just for the general fund. We're also adjusting the pay scale, increasing the starting pay, pay in all the ranges, approximately three and a half percent. That'll help attract people and get more people in the door. We're also increasing paramedic pay, about sixty seven percent. It's going to seven thousand, eight hundred dollars annually. Currently, it's four thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. We have a TCRS plan and the legacy plan, which is now closed, but the actuarially, actuarially determined rate for that is increasing one point nine two percent. So we budgeted money in the, in the budget to cover that cost. That increased cost is about three hundred and sixty eight thousand citywide. And then this budget also includes a longevity pay bonus for employees, and that's about four hundred and eighty four thousand dollars citywide too. So a lot of increases here to address our employee pay. And we had showed this to you last month, but this shows you the impact of that two thousand dollar market adjustment. So for about seventy two percent of our employees, that's a greater than three percent increase in their pay. This budget also funds seven new positions. Two positions in the general department, a support service tech and a purchasing officer. One firefighter in the fire department, a parks groundskeeper in the leisure, leisure services athletics division. A truck driver in the sanitation department, a leak locator in the water quality control department, and a meter installer in the energy department electric division. This budget also eliminates two positions, so we're a net gain of five. We're consolidating two positions in the public works department into one. And we're eliminating one position in the gas division of the energy department through reorganization. And this slide is very hard to see, but we shared it with you last month. This is the detail of the capital projects that are in the general government budget. We're looking at forty one point one million dollars in capital projects, and this excludes utilities. So we're gonna jump into the general fund, which is the primary operating fund of the city. And we are budgeting revenue and transfers in of forty point five million dollars, which is a four point three percent increase over fiscal year twenty five. Eighty seven percent of the funds come from local taxes. Thirty five point one million dollars, which includes property tax, sales tax, in lieu of tax, and business tax. And we're budgeting an increase in sales tax of two hundred and fourteen thousand and property tax eight hundred and two thousand. This is a look at the budget of revenues by source and transfers and by source, and you can see fifty percent of our revenue for the general fund comes from low option sales tax. Twenty one percent from property tax, and that increased a percent this year because of the property tax increase that we're doing. So we're heavily dependent on low option sales tax. And we've already talked about property tax in a previous ordinance, so sales tax. We are projecting sales tax growth for fiscal year twenty six at two percent over where we're estimating to finish this year. So we're budgeting twenty million, two hundred and ninety one thousand for next year. We did change this, we updated for the one additional actual month results that we got since we met last month. So we're expected to hit about ninety nine percent of budget for this year, and then we're budgeting two percent on top of that for next year. Some other revenue highlights, this budget includes in lieu of payments from our utility departments, energy and water, water quality control, one point eight million. The payment in lieu of tax that we received from the hospital is also going into the general fund, seven hundred thousand. We have wholesale beer tax, so one point one million, business tax, one point seven million, wholesale liquor tax, five hundred and fifty thousand. And non-recurring, we have an LPRF grant that we're doing a project at Can Creek Park, that's five hundred and sixty two thousand, five hundred. Moving on to the expenditure side, this ordinance appropriates thirty nine point five million dollars in operating expenditures. That's a four point eight percent increase over prior year. And budgets capital expenditures of six point five million. And this is a look of the slide of the operating expenditures and transfers out by type. And you can see there seventy seven percent of our operating expenditures are salaries and benefits. The next largest one is other operating expense at fifteen percent. And then this slide shows you the operating expenditures by department. And over fifty percent is spent in public safety, police and fire, or fifty two percent. And we're gonna move on to the police department. This budget for the police department budgets operating expenditures of twelve million, five hundred and seventy four thousand. That's an increase of two point three seven percent and capital of two hundred and ninety eight thousand, five hundred. And that capital includes six patrol vehicles with their equipment and installs of two hundred and ninety eight thousand, five hundred. For the fire department, we are budgeting, budgeting operating expenditures of seven million, nine hundred and thirty one thousand, an increase of five point seven three percent. And again, this department is receiving one new position, a firefighter position, and we're increasing paramedic pay that's budgeted in operating. And in their capital of two million, three hundred and twenty nine thousand includes the ladder truck that has been ordered of two point two million dollars. Hopefully it gets here this next fiscal year. A rescue squad is seventy three thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and a cardiac monitor, forty five thousand, seven hundred and twenty nine to go into that rescue squad and ten portable radios of ten thousand, three hundred and thirty nine dollars. The public works department, we're budgeting operating of five million, three hundred and seventeen thousand, seven fifty, an increase of three point one percent. For this department in operating, we, they're actually losing a full-time position because they're combining two into one into an engineering assistant position. We also included in operating funds for a traffic crew step program the director, the director wants to implement. We've also increased materials and supplies, about fifty thousand dollars. This is a department that does a lot of work out in the community streets. So they're, they're really seeing the increased cost, the inflationary cost of the supplies that they need. And then we're also increasing operating twenty nine thousand dollars in repairs and maintenance in buildings. For capital, we're budgeting one million, three hundred and fifty three thousand, five hundred, and that includes five hundred thousand for the recycling center at Lowe's and Stevens. One F two fifty pickup truck and two F one fifty pickup trucks. And then the stormwater project here on Spring Street that's just getting started, that's gonna flow into the next fiscal year too, so we're budgeting seven hundred thousand for that. The Department of Leisure Services, we're budgeting operating expenditures of two million, five, nine hundred and fifty one thousand, seven ten. That's an increase of five point eight one percent. They are getting one full, new full-time position in the athletic division, a ground maintenance person to help with the new amenities that we're putting in down at Can Creek Park. And then we also just recently increased temporary pay. They have a lot of temporary employees that help that department function. Concession workers in the summer, park workers in the summer, camp workers. So we did that too with, with the beginning of this summer season. And then capital for them, we budgeted one million, nine hundred and twenty three thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars. That includes sixty thousand dollars to replace the HVAC units at the Can Creek Gymnasium and at the Depot Museum. We're also budgeting one million, eight hundred and six thousand, one fifty eight. That's for the LPRF Grant Park Project. We are expanding Can Creek Park into some new area, and that is the contract amount, which includes the, the options with paving and fencing and then the Kimley Horn contract. And then twenty two thousand for the Kimley Horn contract for CPAC. They did all the design work for CPAC and a tractor and a mower for Sportsplex. And for the Parks and Maintenance Division, we're budgeting operating expenditures of two million, one hundred and seventy four thousand, two ten. That's an increase of two percent. And capital of thirty four thousand, five hundred dollars, but they're getting four new paddle boats for the Can Creek Park Lake. And a tractor for the cemetery, and we budgeted twenty five thousand to reimburse the PBA for the lighting work at the Leslie Town Center. Community development, we're budgeting for operating expenditures, one million, six hundred and thirty eight thousand, one thirty two. That's an increase of six percent. And capital, we're budgeting sixty thousand dollars, and that's for ERP implementation, a separate module for community development. For the general government, we're budgeting operating expenditures of five million, eight hundred and twelve thousand and increase of seven point seven percent. Two new positions in this department, a support service tech and a purchasing officer. We've included funds to increase pay for the city judge and city attorney. We've got professional service contract to move forward with phase three of the ERP consulting project. And then we've got funds in there, as the open funds come in, we are turning around and under the MOU with the hospital, distributing that money to the hospital. And for the IT division, we're replacing network switches and that'll be cost shared with our utilities, that's twenty five thousand. So we're budgeting capital here of five hundred and fifty thousand. ERP year one implementation, two hundred and fifty thousand, and replace the electrical switch here at City Hall. That's about two hundred thousand dollars, and then we put a hundred thousand dollars in there to look at repairing the sidewalks and concrete work around City Hall. So this slide kind of summarizes all the capital in the general fund. Again, six million, five hundred and forty nine thousand dollars in capital just in the general fund alone, a lot of projects within each department. And then this slide summarizes the general fund. Revenues and transfers in, in this budget ordinance is forty thou, forty million, four hundred and ninety five thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars. Total appropriations of operating expenditures, capital expenditures and transfers out, forty six million, one hundred and eighty nine thousand, nine fifty seven. So this budget is, is a budget deficit and it's gonna reduce our fund balance by five million, six hundred and ninety four thousand dollars. And our projected fund balance at the end of next And our projected fund balance at the end of next fiscal year is a little over thirty-three million dollars. So moving on to State Street Aid, we are proposing revenues of seven million nine hundred and seventy-three thousand, which includes five cents of the property tax and state shared gas tax and grants. We are appropriating nine million seventy thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars in expenditures with one point eight million dollars for paving streets, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for sidewalks, seventy-five thousand for salt, two hundred and seventy-two thousand for intersection improvements and six point seven million dollars in capital. Capital includes forty-eight thousand for traffic controllers and monitors, twenty-five thousand for traffic counters. That's being rolled from this fiscal year. Sixty thousand for guard rail repairs and six million five hundred and eighty-two thousand for T.DOT grant projects. Ongoing grant projects include Spring Street Sidewalk Space Two, Interstate Drive sidewalks and South Willow and Jackson Turn lanes that we're working with T.DOT on those projects. Transportation Fund. For the Transportation Infrastructure Fund, we are proposing revenues of one million seven hundred and two thousand nine hundred dollars, which is primarily property tax. This fund receives twelve and a half cents of the property tax rate. We are appropriating expenditures and transfers out of one million nine hundred and ninety-four thousand. The transfer out of eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine ninety-four is to the Debt Service Fund and for debt repayment on the portion of the twenty-twenty-two and the twenty-twenty-one B bonds that was used for Tenth Street Phase Two and West Stevens Street. Expenditures include five hundred thousand committed to the state in a partnership project for turn lanes at Willow and near State Drive. I think Council already approved the resolution committing to that. Three hundred thousand for looking at a south of I-40 east-west connector and two hundred and ten thousand dollars for a possible streetscape project on West Twelfth Street and eighty thousand dollars to continue the traffic camera project. The General Improvement Bond Fund. This is where we account for the projects that are funded by debt. The fiscal year twenty-six budget appropriates twenty-five million five hundred and eleven thousand dollars in expenditures. Projects in the budget that are currently underway are construction of the new fire stations, the CPAC Leisure Services Facility Parking Lot Project, the Can Creek Park Project, the splash pad in the parking area. Street projects include West Stevens Street Project, which is ongoing of two million one hundred and sixty-three thousand. And we've got money in there for Tenth Street Phase Two, seven hundred thousand dollars to wrap up and what's going to carry into July. The budgeted expenditures also include funds to do preliminary work in planning on Phase Three of Tenth Street. The budget includes appropriation for development of downtown property of three million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and three million contingency for facilities and property acquisitions. To cover these expenditures, we are budgeting two bond issues of ten million dollars. Council has already approved the first issue authorizing up to twenty million dollars last fall. And we went to the bond market in December and issued about ten million dollars back in December. So we'll be issuing the other ten million dollars later this summer for those. And then the additional ten million to cover the projects that we have budgeted will probably be in early twenty-twenty-six. So this slide kind of summarizes the budgeted project list that we have. Tenth Street Phase Two, West Stevens Street Phase One, Tenth Street Phase Three, the CPAC Dogwood Park Leisure Services Facility renovations, the fire station rebuilds, the Can Creek Project, new facility acquisition, and that's a contingency, and new property acquisition and development downtown. And then the bond issue cost. So we're looking at total project costs of twenty-five and a half million dollars. We're projected to still have bond proceeds on hand at June thirtieth of about five and a half million dollars. And last year, Council approved us moving two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the General Fund to this fund to be used towards the fire station FFNE when it gets completed. So we've got that two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars that's available too. So that shows us we need additional debt of a little over nineteen point six million dollars. That's the twenty million dollars that we're budgeting to borrow in the next fiscal year. And then potential future projects that will require debt. I think the next big one that's on our radar is moving forward with Tenth Street Phase Three. And then a connector street south of I-40. And then we talked about South Walnut widening. And then we have the property south of I-40, developing it for a public park and then extending the rail trail. And then we've talked about building a fifth fire station. So we've got a lot of projects for the future that we need to do. But we've got a lot going on, but we still got a lot that's on our radar, so. So this is the Debt Service Fund. This is how we service our debt through this fund. And this fund is budgeted revenue of five million two hundred and nineteen thousand seven twenty-two. This fund is allocated three and a half cents of the property tax. So that's, and that's an increase of one and a half cents. They got one and a half cents of the property tax increase. And also state shared sales tax, we allocate this fund, and we're budgeting four million three hundred and fifty-five thousand of that. Transfers from the Transportation Fund to support the debt service on the road projects I previously mentioned. And then expenditures in this fund are basically principal and interest on our bonds. And I have included PNI payments on the issue that we'll be doing this fall because we make those payments in June. But if we borrow money in the spring, that would be in fiscal year twenty-seven if we have a PNI payment. So this, this fund is projected to add to its fund balance next year and have a fund balance of twenty-two point two million dollars. So our current debt outstanding, we currently have six bond issues outstanding, and this excludes utilities. This is just general obligation, general government, for a total of thirty-four million seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And we did an issue back in December, nine million four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And when we went to the market then, Moody's did improve our bond rating to double eight one with that twenty-twenty-four issue. So this slide shows you the difference between the debt service and the revenue that's going into this fund. So this includes, if you see the blue markings there, that's the current debt outstanding. And the red line across is where our projected revenue is for this fund. And green is if we do a ten million dollars. That's the debt service on doing ten million dollars this fall. And the purple is doing ten million dollars on debt service in the spring. So you can see for about three years, we'll reduce reserves, but we still have a strong fund balance. And the inflows there, this is not assuming any increase. This is the current property tax and the current state's shared sales tax. So for an even greater look at debt capacity, assuming then we did another five million in November of twenty-twenty-six and then ten million after that as we move forward with Tenth Street Phase Three. You can see for about six years, we will spend more than what's going into the fund, but we have a significant fund balance and we'll draw some of that down. And this fund shows you, this slide shows you what that fund balance would be. This compares the fund balance to total expenditures. And you can see the blue line, the fund balance will come down and it'll reach its low point of about thirteen point six million dollars in twenty thirty-three with that additional thirty-five million dollars in debt. So that gives you an idea. And expenditures at that point would be six point three million dollars. And they recommend that your fund balance not go below what one year's debt service would be. So we're well above that. So the conclusion is we do have the debt capacity to move forward with another large project and probably even have the debt capacity to do some, a couple smaller projects. So with no new revenue being dedicated to the.
Your projections are very conservative.
Very conservative, yes, sir.
With this level of investment, you would intuitively think there'll be some improvement, but you're taking a more conservative approach, which is great.
Yes. Okay, Solid Waste Fund. We are budgeting revenues of three million two hundred and forty-three thousand, which includes property taxes. This fund is being allocated six cents of the property tax. We have given one half cent of the property tax to this, property tax increase to this fund. And charges for services is budgeted at two million four hundred and sixty-three thousand. The budget includes no changes in rates. We just increased rates this past fall. And for expenditures, we are appropriating three million three hundred and ten thousand thirty-four dollars. Operating expenditures are two million two hundred and ninety-four thousand, which is a seven and a half percent increase over current year. This budget does fund one new position. They're getting one of the new positions, a truck driver for the residential services. Capital is budgeted at one million sixteen thousand. Council has already approved the front load garbage truck and the roll-up truck in order to lock in prices because we knew there were some big price increases coming. So we locked those in. Those will be delivered later this fall. Capital also includes a brush truck at two hundred and twenty-five thousand. The fiscal year twenty-six budget has a deficit of sixty-six thousand and a projected fund balance at the end of next fiscal year of over two million dollars. The Economic Development Fund has budgeted revenues of five hundred and eighty-three thousand, which is property taxes and interest. This fund receives four cents of the property tax allocation. We are appropriating expenditures and transfers out of two million eight hundred and fifty-one thousand. We are budgeting one million contingency for land right-of-way and easements. One million three hundred and eighty-five thousand is budgeted for the Council-approved grant to the IDB for the infrastructure at the Willow Shopping Center. You've already approved that. We're not sure if that's going to happen next fiscal year, but we wanted to go ahead and make a reservation of that money so that we knew that that was coming. The three hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget for infrastructure projects include two hundred and fifty thousand for a downtown parking lot. We've been working with tech with some property over here, that Church Street, off Church Street, to put a parking lot in there. And then a hundred thousand dollars for improvements at Green Gate Lane for the new shopping center that's coming in. The budget reduces fund balance to a projected one million six hundred and sixty-three thousand at June thirtieth of the end of next year. The Quality of Life Fund has budgeted revenues of one million one hundred thousand, which includes nine hundred and twenty thousand in the hotel motel tax and a hundred and twenty-five thousand in property tax. This fund is allocated one penny of the property tax rate. Expenditures and transfers out total two million fifty-three thousand. The park building construction there of two hundred thousand is to build two restrooms at Can Creek Park using city work crews. One will be at the new pickleball area and one will be at the newly expanded LPRF grant area. One million five hundred and eighty-four thousand one ninety-five is for projects using the hotel motel tax, and I've got more details on that in the next slide. But the fiscal year budget is a deficit of nine hundred and fifty-two thousand eight eighty-five, and the projected fund balance at the end of next year is one million three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. So for the hotel motel tax, we're estimating to start the fiscal year with one point three million dollars of unspent hotel motel tax. We're budgeting additional collections next year of nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And then in spending that money, the expenditures is a contribution to the Visitors Bureau, which is basically a transfer to the General Fund of forty thousand dollars. The TTU Stadium Project per Council resolutions of five hundred thousand dollars. And at Can Creek Park, the playground equipment that we recently approved that's been ordered, four hundred and forty-four thousand one ninety-five. And the pickleball courts, which are underway and being delayed because of rain, six hundred thousand we're carrying in next fiscal year. So budgeted expenditures there of one million five hundred and eighty-four thousand. So we still should have about seven hundred thousand dollars left of that revenue at the end of next year. So the Drug Fund is a special revenue fund. And we are budgeting forty-seven thousand dollars in revenue, which is basically fines and a hundred and thirty-three thousand six eighty-eight in expenditures. These funds are restricted in how they can be spent by law. We have budgeted twelve thousand dollars in drug enforcement expenditures and about a hundred and twenty-one thousand in non-recurring law enforcement purchases. That includes thirty thousand dollars for a drone, thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars for a vehicle that brings their total vehicles purchased to the seven, and forty thousand dollars for rifles and seventeen thousand one eighty-eight for hardware, software. The Health Insurance Fund, this is like an internal service fund where all the premiums that we collect for our health insurance, medical, dental and vision, we collect from our employees, our retirees in the cities, and we put into this fund and then we pay the carriers the premiums for those coverages. So it's going to start the year with three million, a little over three million dollars revenue, which again is the premiums collected from the employees, retirees in the city, seven point seven million dollars in expenditures, which are premiums to Blue Cross Blue Shield, seven point seven million dollars. So projected fund balance at the end of next year is over three million dollars. That's the funds that we had available when we went fully insured from being self-insured. So we're going to leave that money there in case the opportunity ever arises and we decide we want to go back to being self-insured. We have funds to be able to do that. So this will be year three, the start of year three, being fully insured with Blue Cross Blue Shield. And they gave us a flat increase. There is no change in our medical, dental or vision premiums for employees. So that's good news. And we have a Medicare Advantage Plan for retirees, and that's on a calendar year. So Workers' Comp General Liability Fund, again, it's an internal service fund. We pay all of our workers' comp and our liability claims out of this fund, and then we bill them back to the departments where the claims arose from. So the revenue there, six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars reimbursements from the departments and expenditures, claims, liability and workers' comp claims, six hundred and fifty thousand three hundred. We're going to have a projected fund balance at the end of next year of one point one million dollars. Tree Board Fund is a small fund that the tree board, I guess, manages. They have a fund balance of about fifteen point eight million dollars. Revenue and transfers in, the city transfers five thousand dollars into this fund. And then they usually get an annual grant of about five thousand dollars. And then expenditures, fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars, operating four thousand eight hundred and ten thousand dollars, the grant expenditures. They try to use that money to plant trees around town. The Animal Control Fund has a beginning fund balance of one point seven seven five million dollars. Revenue and transfers in, six hundred and forty-two thousand, and expenditures, seven hundred and twenty-two thousand two hundred and twenty. So next year, they're budgeting a deficit and reducing their fund balance to one point six million dollars. The animal shelter is supported by all the local governments, and we request contributions from them every year. So we are requesting, the city of Cookeville is going to transfer in a hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred. Putnam County will be contributing a hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred. And then we're requesting from Monterey, Allgood and Baxter amounts there that you see. We also included in the funding two possible part-time temporary workers if the need is a contingency in case the need arrives. They have six full-time employees down there, and then there is one full-time employee at the Police Department that is the inmate supervisor that picks up inmates and takes them to the shelter to help maintain that facility. The contributions from the local governments basically fund about thirty-five percent of the expenditures. They also have charges for services and public contributions and interest earned on their deposits. Moving on to the Utilities. The Water Quality Control Department has cash reserves at the beginning of the year of seventeen point eight million dollars. Operating revenue and loan proceeds, ARPA funds, grants and contributions, non-operating revenues total about thirty-eight point six million dollars. Expenses of fifty-one point seven million dollars, and then you add back depreciation. So they're projected to reduce their cash reserves by eight point five million dollars next year and end the year with nine point three million dollars in cash reserves. Out of their fifty-one seven, fifty-one million dollars in expenses, twenty-nine point two million dollars of it is capital. Their operating budget does fund one new full-time position. There was a leak locator that they're wanting to add to the department. And in fiscal, in, in July, we will be implementing year two of a five-year rate increase plan. So that's already in place, and that'll happen in July. So the next slide, the next two slides kind of summarizes all the capital, since they have twenty-nine million dollars in capital. You've got the water treatment, plant expansion. It's been going on now for a couple of years, four million dollars that we're doing the SRF loan for. The tech wet weather storage facility, eight point nine million dollars. These are all projects that are currently underway. And then he also had a slide of capital projects that are going to be new for next fiscal year that are included in his budget. And I think he went with, went through all those in great detail last month with you. So the Energy Department. For the Electric Division, it's projected to start the year with cash reserves. is projected to start the year with cash reserves of nineteen point eight million dollars. Revenue, power sales of sixty two point three million dollars, non-operating revenue of one point nine million dollars. Expenses of sixty eight million, seven hundred and seventeen thousand and add back depreciation, they are anticipating reducing reserves by about one point two million dollars next year. Ending the year with cash reserves of about eighteen point six million dollars. Out of there expenditure, expenses, sixty eight, seven hundred and seventeen. Seventy three percent of that is purchased power, that's where we pay for power from TVA. So that's about fifty million dollars there, that's their largest expense. And for the Electric Division, they are proposing no rate increase. They are adding one additional employee, a meter installer, and I think that's to help with the conversion to the AMI program. And they've budgeted two million dollars in major projects for their share of the building addition. And then one point five million dollars in the AMI program. Moving on to the Gas Division. They're anticipated to start the year with cash reserves of thirty one point three million. Operating revenues of fourteen point four million. Non-operating revenues of seven hundred and fifty one thousand. Expenses of thirty two and a half million and add back depreciation, they are anticipating reducing reserves by sixteen million, six hundred and forty three thousand and ending next fiscal year with cash reserves at just under fifteen million dollars. They purchase gas and so their largest operating expense is ten million dollars for purchased gas. And they have capital budgeted of eighteen point eight million dollars. And that includes seventeen million dollars for a construction of the new building. So the good news is we have reserves and we are cash flowing that so they can build this building with no debt. They also budgeting three hundred and thirty five thousand dollars for the AMI program. They are proposing no rate increase and they are proposing no additional employees, but they're actually reduced by one than what we budgeted last year due to restructuring. And finally, my last fund is the Customer Service Fund. And this is an internal service fund and I'm presenting it in the same way as the utilities because they provide services to the utilities. They do all the billing and collection of customer utility bills and do the meter reading. So they are projected to start the year with about three hundred and ten thousand dollars. Reimbursements from the utilities, one point nine million. Other revenue, customer service fees, seventy seven thousand. Expenses of one million, nine hundred and seventy seven thousand. Add back depreciation and we're looking to add to reserves next year, eighty four thousand, one hundred and three thousand dollars. And we included forty thousand dollars in repairs and maintenance to try to finish up, that's the last section of City Hall that's not been done, the customer service area and see what we can do there to bring it up to date. And my last slide is basically everything. These are all the funds and so this ordinance that you are voting on tonight appropriates a total proposed expenditures and transfers out of two hundred and sixty million, nine hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and thirty two dollars. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have, but I would recommend your approval.
Thank you, and I felt we need to get like a round of applause.
We're working on that or do we got any change in there for air conditioning?
Let's get a motion on the table first and let's, yeah, let's get some motions going and some discussion here. So do I have a motion? Got a motion by council and a second by everyone else. This is a public hearing and so we will open the floor for anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item here. Yep, go ahead.
Once again, congratulations from the floor. Take a lot of effort putting in and we greatly appreciate your work here in the city of Cookeville. As I was listening, I was, I did still have two questions to be answered for those. Are there any specific investments being made towards affordable housing or tenant support services? I'm asking, does the budget, does the budget prioritize any type of land development or emergency rent assistance or community land trust? Our budget does equal our values here in the city of Cookeville and if housing isn't in the budget, then it reflects that the city's priority means that housing, the affordable housing crisis here is not a priority in the city. And are there new, any new city services being added this year? I knew there was a lot that was mentioned in the presentation, but I was just giving the opportunity to highlight possibly any new city services that were being added this year. And if so, how were they chosen? And just wanted to know what criteria that we do use to determine those service expansions or reductions. And something interesting that I came across when you were presenting was that the debt that we're accruing here in the city itself, and I wasn't seeing any type of clear indication that we were looking to make just as much money or if more to bring in profits for the city in, I guess, in reciprocation to the debt that we're accumulating over those next three to six years. I'm interested to see if there's been any conversations or discussions with any different departments about how to bring in certain types of revenue and different kinds of innovative ways that kind of set our city and our county apart in thinking maybe to throw something out there, possibly collaborating with the Energy Department, Tennessee Valley Authority, possibly getting some wind turbines out on Monterey because we have that super huge wind tunnel there, possibly the city and or the county contributing to the state electricity grid in that sort of manner. We do have a different type of topography here to where our natural resources can contribute to the revenue of our city and our county, so I was wondering if there's been any discussions in those parts. And a direct question to the council as well. Any land developers or ex-op property developers on the county, are there any assurances to the renters of the city that they will not be pushed out with this new property tax increase? I'm seeing that the local tax increase, or the local tax part of the revenue is fifty percent. I'm also seeing that the property tax revenue that comes in is the twenty five percent that's there. So if the property tax continues to increase there, that does put a strain on the actual property owners in the town in order to find somewhere to offset that price. Some of these people here in the room are professionals in that and I'm just speaking, you know, just from what I know. Just I'm looking to see what type of assurances that will have for the people who are on the lower end of the income scale here in the city and how we are providing for them or if the city is looking to provide assurances to them that they won't be pushed out or their rents won't be raised still while trying to thrive here in the city. Thank you.
Do you have any answers to any of that?
Speak to one thing in terms of services, well, I can't really say there's a new service. Adding the additional firefighter was because of a new service that we've added this past year, maybe Benton could speak to this with that community response. That actually, by having that grant position, that we lost a firefighter to that. So this firefighter position that we're budgeting for is to backfill that. But that's a new service that we started this past year. And I think there's been a lot of public press releases about it. And that's working really well. In terms of housing, I mean, you guys could probably speak better to this. We do not have a housing department within the city, you saw the departments when I went through the budget. But what we have in our community is Highlands Residential Services, which used to be called the Housing Authority. We do support them in that when we got ARPA money, we gave, we gave them a significant one-time cash contribution towards some housing that they're, I guess, just now breaking ground on. It's supposed to help with.
Should be done next June.
And it was the magic grant they were receiving as well. The Housing Authority.
So we do what we can to support them, but we do not have a housing department. Now, you guys might be able to speak more to, you know, if you want to wait till after the meeting about, you know, zoning or whatever, you know, land trust or whatever else that is. But in terms of housing, you know, that's, we do help, we have the Housing Authority, Highlands Residential Services, and we do support them.
Any more comment? Do you have a comment from council?
I'll just throw something out there. I know we're talking about tax increase and all that, so I'm bringing two things and something you mentioned made me think about it. So in our tax increase we're doing is going to be about eight hundred and sixty thousand of the price, but.
Yes.
We, there's a single article cap tax that we've been trying to get from the state to get back to us, and that's one point two million dollars. We don't get that and that is our tax money here. And if we can get that back, we wouldn't have to look at these increases on that. That's just a point to make. And so we need to be, we do this every year, we talk to our representatives and we talk to the capital and say, we need, that's our money, we'd love to have that back. And we're going to do it again.
But that is state legislation, we don't have control.
Yeah, we have to have them, so the state, if they would give us that money back, we could probably, we wouldn't have to look at these tax increases. So it'll be time, there's time, you can reach out to your representatives and call the state and say, hey, we would love to have that money back because that's one point two million dollars. So anyway, I just want to bring that up. That'd be nice to have that back.
Did some quick math, my, my very modest house will go up ten dollars a month in property taxes and ten fifty to be exact, off of its assessment. I think that's not a huge rent increase for what I have to pay to own my house and live in the city of Cookeville, especially for the amount of services that I will be getting as a person in this community. So yeah, if your landlord's jacking up the price, hundred dollars a month for a tax increase, that's wrong. I can speak to that. You know, this is a ten dollar a month increase on, on rent. And, and so it's necessary, I'm going to show you this. Yeah, Brenda shouted like forty slides ago. I won't make her go back or she wants to, she can. I'm going to show you this. This piece of the pie is sales tax. It's fifty percent of what our operating revenue for the general fund. And, you know, property tax is only twenty one percent of that, that means this town runs off of its great economy and what Tennessee Tech brings it, the hospital brings it, what our businesses bring it in this community. And we as residents of Cookeville benefit from that. You do not, you do not want this graph to show the reverse, the property tax and the sales tax on here. That is a hurt a community in distress. And we are not that, we are a community that is moving ahead at full pace and we want that because it helps all of our residents in Cookeville. We get so much more done for the residents of Cookeville, for the people of Cookeville because we are growing and because we can draw people in. We are still the, very much the hub of the Upper Cumberland and our tax dollars do show that. And so I, I think that this is a very understood thing and if you also look at our tax increase history, that amount that we're increasing, it's not, we're not increasing taxes every year. You know, you compare property tax increases to inflation and this is a huge win for the residents of Cookeville. And that's because fifty percent of our revenues and the majority of our revenues come from other places that, that can change with that, you know. If inflation goes up, the price of goods at the stores go up, the tax is, is more. And that comes back to the city and so that adjusts with inflation. And so it's an important thing, it is a little bit of a double-edged sword because if the economy does turn bad, then ultimately we might see a little bit less revenue. But that being said, in the past, what is it, how long have we been on here, Lauren?
Six, seven, eight, seven years, seven years.
I have not seen any of the swings in the economy despite COVID or any of that hurt our ability to collect and that's thanks to Brenda's conservative planning of this budget. And I just want to give Brenda an applause. Put this together, none of this could happen without all of our department heads digging through their budgets, working really hard and making sure that the resident's dollar is spent well. And not, not just spent, not just like, oh, let's get a shiny new truck. I mean, these decisions are thoughtful, they, they, they have to turn things down to their own employees and tell people like, I can't get that for you this year. We, we've got a budget to stick to and we've got a, a department to manage and they do a great job, so thank you to our department heads. The council spent two days with our department heads at a public session. We'll be back in May and we dug through this binder here. It's a separate binder than what we brought in for our council meeting. And we went through every line item, line item by line item. And I just, Jenny and Brenda, thank you for all your hard work guiding us through that and to our department heads. I'm, I'm very excited about this budget, the improvements Cookeville is making and the direction Cookeville is headed.
It's a team effort, we start this budget process back in January and all the department directors, we send them Excel spreadsheets. They have to project what they're going to spend the rest of this year, what they want for next year, they get them back to us and then we have meetings with the city manager trying to bring it together and get it all balanced, we do all that before we even present it to you and then have back and forth from there. So it's, it's a team effort, it takes everybody involved to get it done. By time, in time, because the controller's office every year puts more and more requirements on it, but it has to be adopted by June thirtieth, so. And in terms of sales tax, yes, we are heavily dependent on sales tax. And Mr. Shipley used to say, shop local, shop local. You shop here, don't go to Mount Juliet, don't go to Nashville, don't go to Knoxville. You shop here in Cookeville and your money stays here and it goes into the general fund and it helps cover the salaries of our police officers, our fire department, all of the departments in the general fund. So it's important that you stay and shop local and this council and the community leaders have been very proactive in trying to bring new shopping opportunities here to Cookeville. We recently, we had the Shop City Eagles Point, which is a new development, brought all new retail to town and helped keep that sales tax base. We've got new retail development that's coming in, in the next year. And we are investing money to help it make, to in the road to try to make it easier for people to get to those shopping centers and spend their money. So we've got money in the budget to do, you know, some improvements to Green Gate Lane to make it easier to get to those. So they're proactive trying to keep that big green part of the pie up so that we don't have to increase the, the property taxes so much.
And I like to throw in what we do for our local economy too, you know, we're buying the land down there because we realize there's a need for parking in the West End area, which is where most of, a lot of our local businesses are. And so while we're doing improvements over here for our Target Home Depot, I always turn around and say, we're doing the, you know, the exact same thing for our local economy because they are just as important as those as big box stores, so I think we do a really good job of balancing, taking care of our entire community and making sure that we can keep that local sales tax here and yeah, and that's what supports our economy.
And I say you'll see that local sales tax percentage jump up after fall of twenty six. Really good and just keep them, yeah.
And I'd like to say also, thank you to the water and energy departments as well because we've got some of the best rates really and probably in the region and, and kudos to you guys for ensuring that we're able to keep those rates down and affordable. In addition, regarding, in addition to what we already contribute to the Highlands, we also have in this ordinance, oh, two, five, oh, six, oh, eight, section four, we appropriate a hundred and five thousand dollars to the Chamber of Commerce promote the economic welfare of the citizens with the city with fifty thousand designated for the Highlands Economic Partnership and twenty five thousand designated for workforce development, which helps the citizens be able to obtain affordable housing because they are getting more opportunity for better salary.
Yeah, and I think that's probably reinvesting in Cooke, sorry Chad.
I was just going to, I was going to literally frame it up. Listen, this is a, this is a grown-up budget, I said it last, this is quarter of a billion dollars, I mean, we're dealing with, with real resources here and I couldn't be as great as we all know Cookeville is, I couldn't be happier about the outlook and, and looking down the road. And, and, and literally, I, I look at this, we've said, you know, it's, these are spins and I understand gap principles and that's what they are, but they're investments. And that, that's the reality here and, and the investments keep that, I was keying in on this same chart, they keep this local sales tax number where it needs to be and, and, and as much, thank you, like you said before, to the department heads and it's a team effort. I, I want to be, I'm grateful to the council, I'm glad, I'm grateful for the commitment to this infrastructure that we are, that we are really committing an initiative to. I'm thankful for the robust discussions we have about every dollar in here that we, we think, we take serious how this is going to be invested so that it's, it's two X, three X, ten X down the road. And, and that's the answer to, to affordable housing, that's, that's the framework in which people can prosper, that these sales tax dollars show that and that's, that's what makes, that's why I'm proud of what we're putting out there. And I'm grateful to department heads, a, a committed council to this, to, to the things that we're building that will, that will just lay this groundwork for this prosperity to continue. We, we've got it good and it's going to get better.
Yeah, I think you can point to economic development, when you look for payback, you point to economic development. And, and that's an easy thing to say, what are we investing in that's going to make us more money, what was economic development?
Forty one million dollars in capital improvements. And I mean, just the multiple on that is, is almost immeas- $41 million in capital improvements. And I mean, just the multiple on that is, is almost immeasurable.
Include utilities.
Yeah. It doesn't include utilities, which we already are having most competitive rights on. I mean, but thank you to all of you.
Yeah. We did a great job. I'm, I'm.
Don't forget the free services that we do keep for our residents, the residential trash service. We do not charge for that. A lot of surrounding counties do. And a lot of surrounding cities and municipalities are starting to implement a stormwater utility fee. Since we, which we do not want to do, and we're trying not to maintain that in our public works department, stormwater infrastructure. So that's some things that we are trying to keep away from and keep that residential trash service free to our citizens.
Thank you. It's cause you run a tight ship.
Everybody, they all do. They all run a tight ship.
James is not too bad either.
Yeah, yeah.
Y'all, 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 y'all love the trash, but man, that's one of the most critical things we've got. We're responsible for all the commercial pickup and everything. So.
Yeah. We do collect commercial revenue, which we went up last year on, but residential is still free.
Yeah. And that's another money-making thing that we've done to, to build on. So.
Anything else? All right. Seeing none, we've got a motion in a second. We've had lots of comments. I think everyone's excited to vote on this budget. So let's vote on it.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Are we on 7E? 7E. Uh, we will move on to 7E. Consider resolution R 250609, calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory into the city by referendum and approving a plan of service for the Dotson Branch Road annexation area. Mr. Moore.
We're catching ahead. Oh, yeah.
Budget makes annexation look boring now.
Yes, sir.
I promise to be more brief. Uh, Mayor and council members, this resolution, uh, would set a date for a public hearing, uh, to be held on a plan of services for the Dotson Branch Road annexation area. Uh, that's, uh, we have discussed previously and has been before council. The plan of services included in the resolution has been reviewed, uh, by the planning commission as, uh, requested by, uh, council in a previously approved resolution. During planning commission review, uh, some members of the commission, uh, did discuss including a timeline for the installation of sewer service. However, the plan was recommended as drafted without that specific timeline. And that's been a discussion point we've had. After our work session Monday, um, I've been contacted by a property owner along Shipley Road that is interested in being in, in the annexation. Um, and we discussed this, where, you know, there's original real timeline. We, uh, the planning commission was required to return a recommendation on the plan of services uh, within 60 days of the previous resolution that was passed. And, um, that, that was what was the intent tonight. However, with, uh, some interest along Shipley Road, uh, and to efficiently and effectively deliver services, uh, I would recommend at this time that we postpone consideration of the resolution so I can conduct further study uh, to include the additional acreage. You guys, uh, see that in, in, uh, green and the blue hatched area on the map on your screen. Any date for a public hearing would be determined with consideration of a resolution at a future date. So, um, uh, due to, uh, seeing more interest in the, in the area adjacent to this, this is also an area where we provide, um, water service. Some of our utilities are already being provided here. So I would recommend at this time we postpone until, uh, we can do some more study.
Okay. Do I have a, does anything different? Just a motion to postpone?
Is that okay?
Yeah. Uh, so I'll need a motion to postpone this resolution.
Yeah, I was gonna.
To the next meeting, would that be enough time or do you need to do a?
I was going to ask to postpone to July 1st if a specific date was necessary. So I would ask to postpone until, um, July 17th. That would be.
To go back to planning?
Yes, I'm going to take it back to the planning commission.
So should we move it?
Until 21 days after it's been back to planning or something like that. You can do it that way.
Although we meet in the end of June.
Okay. You have planning to meet in June.
June 23rd is our scheduled meeting.
And then not the first, then July the second meeting?
Yeah.
And then if by then, if we still don't have all the answers, we can postpone again, correct? Labeling, you have to.
Table kills it if it doesn't get passed at the next meeting. So postpones what you want to do.
State law prescribes a timeline for the planning commission to return a recommendation to the council on a plan of services. That is, and then, you know, we're, we're doing that with this, uh, uh, tonight. This, it, it has included in, in the council packets. Um, but this, that may need to be adjusted to understand what additional cost may be incurred to serve this additional area if this is something we want to do. Since this has to go to referendum, this is an annexation that would have to be accomplished by referendum. If a larger territory would be more advantageous for, for, uh, the city to consider, then I think it's, um, is in our interest to put it off.
So we, we fulfilled that initial requirement tonight.
Yes.
Now we can postpone. I'm all for postponing.
Okay. So I've got a motion to postpone to at least July 17th.
Second.
And I've got a second from Councilman Baji. Any discussion from the public? Oops. Yes.
This one's a little bit different. Um, to ask you a question that's right here. Um, in order for this, uh, what kind of new financial burdens or property taxes or utility costs will residents face if they're annexed by the city? I'm guessing I'm just asking that as a general question for future because there might be other parts of Buckland County that might be interested in annexing into Cookeville in the future. So I just thought it'd be a nice way to go ahead and formally address the public if that happens.
We addressed the public on that issue at the last meeting. I don't have a lot of information with you, but I'm happy to follow up with you. But I provided a annexation study to council where we discussed, uh, cost to provide services, revenues, and you know, the tax implications from being annexed into the city. Uh, annexation does require taxation for city taxes, but we feel like it's a good deal for folks with the services we provide.
Gotcha. I would agree too. Um, I was attending that last meeting. I do remember that just asking for reference because some people aren't able to attend those meetings. So just to re-clarify for those who aren't in the room, um, and what is the timeline actually going to be for or delivering those city services like sanitation, emergency responses or infrastructure to those annexed areas whenever it's done? And I noticed that you had mentioned that when you were approaching your presentation earlier, but what's kind of like the perceived timeline that's normal for that?
Some services are delivered immediately upon effective date of annexation, um, like solid waste. I think we provided a 60-day timeline to get solid waste going. That would be delivering cans, get routes set up for that. Uh, you know, water is already, uh, currently being provided by the city. So you would get the benefit of having, uh, an in-the-city rate versus an out of, out of the city rate. Um, you know, sewer is the one, um, service that no specific timeline was provided. Uh, we have included that in prior plans of services. Uh, and we would provide it based on the same criteria and standards we use to evaluate providing sewer in other unserved areas of the current corporate limits. Um, but I, the, the plan of services, uh, and we can definitely get you a copy of the, what was proposed, uh, and it was in the resolution.
Thank you. Um, I'll be at your meeting the next planning meeting too. Something else.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Seeing then we've got a motion in a second, um, to, to postpone to July 17th. So we'll go ahead and take a vote. There's a list of discussions in the council. Then go ahead and vote to postpone.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. 7F, consider resolution R 250608, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with HCA Health Services of Tennessee and proceed with the purchase of property on Depot Street, South Cedar and South Oak Avenues. Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members, um, at our last meeting, the council did approve the purchase of a 5.09 acre tract owned by HCA located at 39 Depot Street. Uh, since that approval, the HCA has requested that the council approve a resolution to memorialize the approval of the purchase. So I'd recommend for your approval of the resolution memorializing your previous action to purchase this property.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge is there? Second by Councilman Walker. Any discussion from the public on this agenda item?
I don't have any questions tonight, but, um, it's been reiterated for this property that's being purchased. Um, I just want to make sure, just ask the, pose the question to the council official. What is the long-term vision for this land and will it remain under the city's ownership or the public ownership? Um, of course, we know that it will be used for parking, of course, but other options that could be out there, housing per space, um, green space, other types of economic development for local businesses, or will it be flipped to any other private developers? Um, and yeah, that's my only question for that.
Yeah. And I'll be happy to speak, you know, the green space. We've already got plans for that. We want to do the parking. That's going to be free parking. Uh, we want to include the green space. And then we do, we want economic development. We want to see that area thrive. And so we've got plans for that. Other than that, we don't really have anything else on the table. Um, but we want to see, we want to see be a vital part of.
The city would be open to nice, cool, innovative ideas to go into the downtown area to bring commerce into the city in that area.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And that on the record, you know?
That's the objective back.
Plans to hire somebody to give us review and give us some ideas on how best to use the property. So that's what.
Yeah. So we want to do.
At least that's the instructions y'all gave me.
Flash out a master plan and then, and then prosecute that.
As soon as possible. Yes, cheers.
Name's boy, I didn't mention it earlier, but in the development of the parking space, is there any consideration of going up with parking space eventually? In other words, start with the ground floor. Well, maybe two levels, sorry, first level and be ready to go up with the second level with concrete.
Well, I think, I think you're already doing that with the asphalt. So if you build a, a parking lot on solid ground, there's the land and the land tends to be when you're, when it's time to need parking garages, the land's one of the highest cost. Well, no, I, I said that wrong. The land is a higher cost than it is today. But, um, the concrete certainly is the highest cost. And the, we've already looked at the, for the amount of spaces that we, we've kind of discussed and considered. The, these are less than half, you know, much, much cheaper parking to put this on the ground than it would be to build parking garages now. Now that, to be said, in 20 years, if we need parking garages, we will own the land to do it. And whether that garage needs to go there or it may need to go in another publicly available lot, that's to be determined, of course, by whoever's in charge of that top cups. But as of right now, this parking should set us up for a very long time at a much cheaper rate than parking garages. And I think that's an important part of this purchase is buying land where, um, that's going to benefit the public good for a long term. And I want to echo, uh, the mayor's comment, you know, I think in, in my old, my discussions with everybody, it's, the drive is to see green space near the depot, additional parking downtown, and then reserve a portion of the land aside for more downtown development of Cookeville. And I think that that is the, the, the recipe for this project.
Study of research of concrete over, doing it on the ground. You know what the difference would be?
It costs more.
It's many more dollars.
$1,000 a spot.
Yeah.
If you, $60,000 to $80,000 per parking spot.
To go to the next level.
Go vertical. That's right. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
That doesn't, that doesn't mean that we'll be contemplating it in our master plan. I mean, we're, we're, there, there are professionals who will help steer and guide us through this. We know kind of, you know, what, what our thesis is, what our, what our vision is, and, and, and we'll get, we'll, we'll get guidance on that. It'll be good.
All right.
I just wanted to add one last question. Um, he just made me think about it. Of course, I'm sorry that you did, but, um, just thinking just for a care aspect, ADA compliance with handicap parking spots. I think that's a big, um, I shouldn't say issue, but concern or, you know, something that's down there. I would think just personally me, the existing parking spaces along Broad Street, if those could be designated as handicap spots because they would be accessible to the businesses right out in front, they're right there and facing the property. And then I'd hate to force, you know, willing-bodied, able walking people to walk. But you know, it would be nice if we could take care of our ADA residents of the city as well in that downtown process and space because there is so much limited space to park there. I think preference could be, um, made or considered in that as well when we're talking about the parking spaces.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any more comments from the public? Nope. Any comments from council?
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. 7G, consider awarding bid for construction of the water treatment plant generator project. Mr. Turner.
Mayor and members of the council, this, uh, generator project is mostly funded by a grant. Our match is 5%. The project cost is about $4 million. We bought several, uh, components for this project already through bid process. This construction contract is to furnish the remaining components and putting them all together. Two contractors picked up plans, received one bid, uh, from WNO Construction, $1,809,000. Um, and I recommend your approval for award of this bid.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion made by Councilman Baji, seconded by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Yep. Any discussion from the public? Should've sat closer.
Okay. Um, this water treatment plant generator project, were there any past incidents or risks that made this project a top priority for the department?
There've been several times where we've had trees fall in line. This puts part of that underground as well. Where we've come within hours of, uh, running out of water.
Wow.
Yeah. So it's, it's never, we've never been out. We've come close. We've, we've lost sleep over it. So.
We appreciate your hard work. We appreciate that. Okay. And our rate payer is going to be expected to help finance this project through water bill increases.
The project is about a $4 million project. The city's cost is 200,000. So, uh, we've, we have that in our budget and, uh, you know, it's a drop in the bucket for what we're getting out of this. So, um, but the rates do fund that.
And an interesting kind of question I wanted to ask, has there been any study about capturing the heat that comes from the water plant in order to create some sort of a conservative energy process for the city? Um, I'm very much interested in talking to the industry department about different ways that the county can start providing innovative ways to contribute to the power grid here in Tennessee. So I think Cookeville is in, in Fudham County here in the upper Cumberland in general, is an excellent place to start in the city or add to.
Not, not really. Of course, we're, we're 10 miles from city as well, you know, the plant. So.
So there hasn't been any discussions about any kind of, kind of capturing any kind of that heat possibly to help contribute anything. I wouldn't, you know, it's not something a lot of people think about. So don't feel bad. You're losing sleep about just the water. So I appreciate that, but just throwing that out there.
Thank you. Any other comments? Comments from council? Okay, let's vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. 7H, consider authorizing the city manager to execute an engineering contract for a sanitary sewer design for Ridgedale Drive. Mr. Turner.
Uh, presently we serve portions of Ridgedale Drive with sanitary sewer. This project would, uh, pick up the remainder of those parcels there. This is for the design contract, city engineer, B. Clinton Engineering, and the negotiated fees, 26,500. It would serve approximately 23 parcels.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
The move.
Motion made by Councilman Baji is there? Second, seconded by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public?
So I actually had a couple of residents from Ridgedale Drive contact me about this, just to ask this, these two questions for you. Um, they wanted to know what prompted this project. Were there any kind of septic failures or complaints or any kind of EPA compliance that needed to be, um, associated with this?
We have had a few residents from, uh, with septic failures.
Gotcha. Thank you. And are homeowners going to be compensated or assisted during the construction if services are disrupted?
We try to minimize that, uh, and we shouldn't have any, uh, but, uh, no, we, we do the best we can, just like any construction project, you see.
That's what we expect out of here, the great city of Cookeville. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any comments from council? All right.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Turner. That concludes the agenda portion of the meeting. All right. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the city council on any non-agenda items? Okay, go ahead.
I think I might've skipped this. I thought this was the last one that's on here. It was about the drive-through restaurants that were in the CN zones. Was, I'm not sure, did that get switched around somehow?
It's just, we just had a date for the public hearing for that. So there'll actually be a portion for a public hearing where you can speak on that agenda item.
Gotcha. I'll just ask the questions here because I know it will be, hopefully it'll be discussed before then. So that way it might be discussed before the council. Um, is there any data that's been reviewed regarding the impacts of drive-throughs on traffic congestion and pedestrian safety that are in there? You didn't have to.
You don't have an opportunity to ask.
Yeah, we don't have any.
These questions would be best presented to the planning commission.
Hearing as well. Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thanks for clarifying that.
Anybody else? Yes.
First of all, I want to give five kudos to the, uh, First of all, I want to give five kudos to the, uh, people go around and pick up all of our trash. See brush cleaned up by C. Just about anything along the road and once or twice a month, they pick up, uh, our junk with furniture or whatever. And, uh, that I think as a community, we really appreciate. That's number one. Now the next thing is going to be a vlog. So get ready. Now, what I'm speaking about again is the community, the community. This is not just Boyd Klein. Remember what I said. It's the community. Where I've been in the community, which is all over town, um, Ralphs, et cetera. There is a general complaint. That many people believe that Chad Gilbert is in conflict for being on city council. He is in it for himself, in their opinion. And so my request tonight is the Chad volunteer, volunteer to do the first term and be done. That's my request. And I think you, you normally could go another year, right Chad? Two years. Yeah. Okay. So the community believes he definitely has a conflict of interest to be on city council. Many people, uh, also believe that Chad is in a position of control of what goes on the city, in the city that benefits himself and not the community as the benefactor, as a community, as a community should be the benefactor.
I'll go ahead and say, we do appreciate comments, but things like this are something that need to be discussed, you know, with us. We're not going to accept comments, you know, accusing anyone of the city council of any wrongdoing or any fault.
And that is if the council or Chad want to talk to me about this, I would be glad to talk to you about why I'm saying this.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Thank you.
I think that's how it should have been handled.
With, with that being said, I'm not going to stand here and let Chad's character be, uh.
No.
Only thing else is, was elected to the council. People voted for him to be on this council.
And I know for a fact that he's actually voted, made votes that actually hurt him financially. You know, because he's thinking about the city first. That, that's uncalled for and unjustified. And I, you know, I think you owe him an apology for doing that public.
We'll say, yeah, if there's any discussion, we can have, we can have that.
I know, I, I know. If, if anybody had a problem, they have one of them coming to me first.
Yeah.
And I, I would expect the same for any other member of this council.
That's the proper way to handle that. Let's go to him first and talk to him. Hopefully this doesn't make the newspaper.
Is there any, anybody else who'd like to speak to the council on any agenda items? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to any council discussion. Okay. Seeing none, meeting is adjourned.